It is now out for public comment.
Hang on one second. Is the video going? Okay, great.
Sorry to interrupt, Chris. I can see. And so I'm, I'm. It's a great opportunity for you to hear what the latest of what Trimest is considering. I want you to know that staff probably will be submitting comments as you'll see in here. There's quite a bit of overlap between some of the stuff Trimest is doing and stuff we're doing with our shuttles. So we're going to continue to work this together. But this is also an opportunity for you to share your comments. And if you want to submit anything in writing, we can do that. But first, I think I just wanted to let you have Grant propose, describe what is being proposed. And he has proposals for all the whole region. We've asked him to focus on Washington County. The rest are all in your packet, but we're probably going to run out of time. You're probably going to want to talk on the Washington County portions more, but the rest is there. If you want to review it and he'll take questions.
Chris, thank you for that gracious introduction. It's good to be with you this morning. So yes, thanks for pulling up the slides there, Clark. So I will step through this. I want to just say really quickly right at the outset, you, the, the choice of the word concept is specific and intentional. This is, you know, sometimes plans are put forward that are further baked maybe than this is. This is intended to start a conversation and, and work with you all, our partners, to chart a course for the future of bus, of the bus network. So I just want to say that really strongly at the outset, we are here to have a conversation. We're not here to tell you what we're doing. So thanks. So since the pandemic, really, the way people travel has changed pretty significantly. Through this being a hybrid meeting even, and it's, it's all around us. It's pretty evident clearly that telework has enabled new changes and new opportunities for folks that may not have existed before, and we feel like our bus network needs to respond to that. And a quick example is seen here in this change in ridership chart. Line 76 operating from Beaverton Transit Center South through the county is a frequent service line. We recently upgraded it to frequent service. That line is only down by 2% since from pre pandemic levels. But yet, line 94 along Pacific Highway, an express bus that operates only between, well, it operates between Sherwood and Tigard as a local bus, but then turns into an express at Tigard into downtown Portland, down by more than, you know, around half of its original ridership. So in general, we see this trend where non downtown Portland oriented service has sustained or even done better. And that, and I think that makes sense. You know, you think of the essential worker. Places of an in-person work are, are along those corridors, whereas downtown is a high concentration of more white collar nine to five jobs that may have shifted online or to other locations. So that gives you a quick framework of what we are thinking as we headed into this project. We also did a survey in the spring. Over 5,500 people responded. We fielded the survey three different ways, including with community-based organizations to make sure we reached out to underrepresented populations. And then one version was a statistically significant survey by D H M Research, so that we could actually have one cross-section that was matched statistically to the Trimest district. So those three different methods, we pulled all that data together to really understand what was the priorities for the region. Not surprisingly, first off is maximize ridership and reduce the growth of traffic congestion. Those two really are the same thing for us. By, by focusing on ridership, we also by in turn hopefully reduce traffic congestion. But then followed closely behind that is to focus on a service that improves the outcomes for those with lower incomes and persons with disabilities, essentially an equity question. So in the goals, we checked in with the community and then even shared that, that survey research with our partners here in Washington County. As you all have transit planning undergoing right now. So, but that, we took that as our goal. That's our North Star maximumized ridership, reduce traffic congestion and focus on equity. Changes in resources. You know, at the outset, you know, we, we stepped back service by, we're now at, right now, 22% reduction over pre pandemic levels. Initially, that was done in anticipation of the tanking economy. And of course, the economy did tank temporarily, but then it came surging roaring back. And so we now find ourselves with the Carissa funding and cares funding and a roaring economy that we have the resources to restore service back to pre pandemic, pre pandemic levels. However, we've now run into the new buzzsaw that is the labor shortage that I know many others are experiencing as well. But so this plan is, or this concept rather is to put forward the idea that we need to restore service, but maybe it doesn't need to just snap back to what once was pre pandemic. That things have changed and we need to acknowledge that and pivot our network to that. So in this concept is 38% growth over the service that we see out today. And that's even 10% above pre pandemic levels of 2019. I kind of already said this, this is a concept, not yet a proposal. We, we want to have a conversation. That's why I'm here. We can refine it and will. A quick primer on how this slide deck works. You know, we had those goals of ridership and equity, but how do we measure that? We measured improvements in access. How does this new network connect people in places better than before? So a quick primer, how that works appears a person in a universe of destinations. When you combine walking or biking with transit, how far can you get in that universe of destinations? And we wanted to see an improvement everywhere. And so that's kind of how this deck is oriented. So focusing on ridership and equity measured by improvements in access. So this is, you know, over on the east side, but it's an example using one singular point of how the existing network compares to that, which is in the service concept. But purple is reachable within the existing network from this singular point at 148th and Halsey on the east side. And blue is the newly reachable area. So you see pretty significant improvements. Now, you know, if you're not versed on the east side geography, a lot of that is guided clearly by equity and also essential and in-person work, the Columbia Corridor, Freight Corridor for industrial jobs, Lent, Southeast Lentz, Powellhurst, Gilbert, lower income area, and then Troutdale Industrial Park. So I think you see not only that improvement in access showing up, but being guided by ridership and equity. I think, you know, in the interest of time, I'm going to move pretty quickly, but please feel free to stop me. You know, saying what I just said again, there's pretty significant improvements here for equity. And especially when you look outside of the central city of Portland. Over 50% of our areas that we've identified through our equity index outside of the central cities, the improvements in service. Where did these ideas come from? Chris and Diame are no strangers to our service enhancement plans, worked on those for many years. A lot of these ideas were drawn from that, but I would draw one particular distinction from that effort versus this. The Unified Service Enhancement Plans was fiscally unconstrained. It was a vision for anything and everything that could happen with Trimest services and even the Regional Coordination Program, which hadn't yet been put in place. So a lot of that was put out there in a fiscally unconstrained way. And so with it, but by, by something being in the service enhancement plans and then also now showing up in this forward together service concept. This forward together service concept is fiscally constrained. It is designed to our financial forecast over the next three to six years. So what that means is what we said in the service enhancement plans, whereas was a vision, this is what we can actually do. So by it showing up in the concept means that we do intend to do it. Provided that we all agree through this, you know, public outreach period. Also, you know, so some ideas came from the service enhancement plans. Some ideas also came from the transit existing conditions report. That's really where we dove heavily into understanding the post pandemic travel market. And a lot of that information is documented there and for your reading perusal, if should you wish at trimest dot org slash forward. But then also, you know, it's noted at the bottom municipal staffs helped us with some earlier drafts. We had some really great workshops and I think Diame Valentine, the Washington County Staff Member, and also Reza Farhoudi and others who were participated in those workshops. They came also helped us refine some of these ideas. So that's where all of this is coming from, rooted in those goals and measured by access. This is how we arrived at the service concept and what's in the concept is expanding the frequent network. People ridership responds to frequency. So wherever we could, we upgraded lines to frequent networks, to frequent service. We extended the grid to new areas, more local services running every 30 minutes and expanded weekend service and the like. Really a focus on making, if, if service operates, making it dependable by operating at a reasonable frequency and multiple days per week. I would note that, that, that those sort of things don't always show up on a map. So sometimes when we see a map, you see a new line here or a line removed there. It's also very important to understand what, what is represented by that line, whether it's operating just in the AM and PM peaks or whether it's operating throughout the day, seven days a weeks is an oceans of difference to a community member. So that expanded frequent network highlighted there. And here on the west side, we would extend the 54 frequent service out along Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. Farmington and 185th would see frequent service. It's nearly there now, but it would have that come with that frequent service guarantee. And line 48 Cornell, that sort of mirrors the 26 pathway, but yet is more in line with key destinations. That would be upgraded to frequent service as well. But throughout the, the region, you see also an extended network there. So we only have 14 frequent service lines currently, and that would grow by 50%. So this is doubling or, you know, 50% increase over the existing number of frequent service lines. Pretty dramatic move there across the region. The grid, I won't belabor this too long, but as you can imagine, the easiest way to connect two different points is with a grid. And Washington County is building out its roadway grid network. And we're going to, what's in the concept is to look to take advantage of that and make more of Washington County grid-like with our service, because it's the most efficient way with bus service to connect two points. If you want me to dive into that further, I won't. I can, I'd rather I'd say I can, but I feel like you might relieve, forgive me for skipping through that in more detail. But again, that, that focus on upgrading services that currently operate only, you know, hourly or less, getting those up to a 30-minute standard or better. Expanding service to new areas, Cornelius Pass Road, Century Boulevard, important out here on the west side. And then improved weekend service with over 100,000 more people near service running on a Sunday district wide and 130,000 more people near frequent service on a Sunday is pretty dramatic. There are some reductions in this plan, don't want to hide that. This is mostly taking back to that focus on the downtown Portland oriented peak hour commute type of service. Where, for example, that the line 94 operates on, it's not listed in here, but it's, it's a better example, maybe. Operates on top of the line 12. The existing conditions report tells you that, you know, that where we actually added service in addition, only in the peak hour to handle that peak load oriented towards downtown may not be needed. You, the underlying service that exists there already can absorb that capacity and handle it well. And that gives us that opportunity to reallocate that peak hour service into those other services that I described earlier, such as weekend, midday and new service. So that's, you know, all of my primers, let's jump into the network. So this is the west side network today. And then this is what the service concept has included. You know, as I came in this morning, or this afternoon, rather, through Evergreen and Glencoe, I think about the West Link Shuttle that's already operating. You know, in many ways, the network that existed prior was prior to the regional coordination program. And I think we have yet to really get our hands around how we best coordinate those. And I think this is a first step in that there's more to do. And I appreciate the partnership with Washington County. But so thinking about Glencoe and first, that's covered by the West Link Service. And then but then we got new opportunities here to, through all of the great efforts that Hillsborough has done and South Hillsborough to plan for transit to be there in the future. And that future is now, we think, to get service from Reed's Crossing, South Hillsborough area, along Sentry and Cornelius Pass up to the North Hillsborough industrial areas acting to Max. And that's where you see that build out of the grid. Then over towards Beaverton, more of service along 170th and Allen. New service there. And then in addition to that frequent service I mentioned earlier, along 185th connecting Aloha, definitely an equity area connecting Aloha up to PCC Rock Creek, ladder of opportunity there. And then Cornell Road, frequent service connecting from Sunset Transit Center through much of the heart of the west side districts out onto into Hillsborough. And so, you know, as we measured that improvement of access, this is one singular point on the west side where we looked at how we could measure how that improvement works for folks. And you see the purple is the existing network and then with faster service on the 48 and the new connections from Aloha up in the North Hillsborough industrial area, the expanded service area there. But then you also do notice there is some bit of impact there. Laidlaw service with the 47 up in Bethany is proposed to be eliminated. That ridership, you know, so those twin, when you follow ridership, you follow linear dense, well-developed corridors. And then equity tells you to focus on lower income. And as a consequence of those two things, some areas based, when you focus on those priorities may fall out. And Bethany is maybe an example of where it's lower density, higher income. And so service is not as high priority there. But that's again, where we want to coordinate and see if we've got this right. Have we turned the dial too far towards equity or not enough?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I'm District Two, so I'm looking at the, you know, the service loss in District Two. And do you ever consider just the fact that it's, there's nothing?
Can we go back a couple of slides?
I'm sorry, I'm to Catherine 21.
Yes, that one. So the area to the northeast.
It's this year.
Yes, that's
Cedar Mill.
District Two, yeah.
Thank you. And it goes all the way. So the service loss is dramatic there in relationship to the population base. But I understand that we're talking about post pandemic. I understand all these issues. I'm just wondering about leaving that whole geography.
Um, well, it's, it's, it, that same framework of thinking of dense linear development and income. And that area from that framework does then fall out. And, and so it's a conversation to be had. I think there's one thing to be said by higher incomes having access generally to motor vehicles. But then there's also the issue that now with telework, you now have two sort of things that maybe are enabling a lifestyle there that may not necessarily need transit. And that's part of this process to have that conversation and understand if you agree or, or maybe don't. But I would say that bus line, I've been at Trimest 16 years and I remember when we ran it as a dialeride shuttle. And then we moved it to a bus line and it's been about a 10-year experiment. And the number of people that use it on a daily basis is less than 20. And so is that a good use of resources? That's what we're here to have this conversation about. So I would also maybe
Responsibility to raise the issue though.
No, and I, that's why I want to have this conversation. That's why we're here. So please do that.
Well, and I think one thing that has helped me, given my being around transportation tables for, what? 15 years now as an elected official. You, you try something based on clear data. You make adjustments and then three to five years ahead, you look at the, the network, the ridership again to see what sort of new evolution do we need to make? So this three to five year look is a pattern that I have seen Trimest take for quite some time. And it's a useful pattern because it's a pattern that is reflective of our communities evolving. So yes, I, I have been at tables, at public hearings, at public meetings where the, the loss of the line 20 of, I think it's 20 up by Laidlaw, I might be giving
47.
47, thank you. The loss of that.
There.
Yes, that, that may be felt by some, but there is a bigger need elsewhere. And we do have to make adjustments and then revisit over the course of time. So if there are more redevelopments in a particular area, then in the future, the network can be revisited.
Of course. And what I would say too, you know, there's a tendency, you know, Chris and others are planners and there's a tendency to want to, want to think long range. And I would say this is not that project. What we're, what our goal with this project is to really understand what the need is today and what our service should probably be doing in response to the change in pandemic and travel patterns and goals of the region. And then we do plan, we think of this as building our new baseline. And then we would work with Metro and others on your longer range plans and identify where we maybe need to look in the longer range. And so I don't think the story is over necessarily for transit in Cedar Mill. I just think at this time, that's what the data is telling us and we might revise that with our longer range plans in partnership. So let's take a look at Southwest. So this is the network today. And then this is the changes. We have seen all the density in Progress Ridge and I get it wrong, I'm sorry, Mountainside or Mountain View? Mountainside, I always want to say Mountain View because I think of Vancouver, Mountainside High School, Progress Ridge. And we think that needs to be responded to that density with service. We already covered sort of Beaverton. You know, this is, I want to talk specifically, I know Lake House we goes Clackamas, but there's sort of an interrelationship here between the Tuolotin service and Lake as we go. And we, for this project, we dealt with them as one geography. This is where I would tell you that lines on the map cannot necessarily best communicate the service that underlies there. The, the Mountain Park and Arnold Creek areas and South Shore of Lake as we go, follow that pattern of low density, higher income. And so it does tell us to maybe consider reducing service there, but areas such as Boons Ferry currently only have between Oregon City and Tuolotin currently only have three trips in the morning and five trips in the afternoon, only on weekdays. And under this concept, that line on that map means that that line would operate hourly throughout the day, seven days a week. So actually Lake as we go is actually a growth, but by extension, then the connection between the residential and commercial areas that are, that are Tuolotin and Lake as we go, Cruzway, similarly only has AM and PM peak service right now. And that would grow to being seven days a week all day. And so there's lots more to cover there. I'm happy to dig into some of those details. How are we on time?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
More for maybe perhaps Chris for you in terms of the, the potential diversion from tolling to some of, some of our cities. How did, are, are you working with the ODAD to sort of help mitigate that? And what is the plan in terms of Trimest offering more services for tolling?
Yeah, there's a call out on the slide here that talks to that. The short, the simplest way I can tell you is that we did reconfigure the network in this, in consideration of tolling. So you do see here service along I-205. And I know, you know, others are looking at that as well through the regional coordination program. And so that's something we need to work on, but still we are at least putting a line on the map and saying that we do think there's an opportunity to run Trimest fixed route service connecting Oregon City and Tuolotin. In fact, we made it an extension of the 76. So it would actually be a, a one-seat ride from Oregon City all the way through Tuolotin, Tigard and Beaverton. So that network we want to put in place, but we are in conversations with the state that we don't necessarily see that generating huge ridership at the outset, but yet with tolling, there may be need to provide more service than ridership would normally dictate. And so we want to, we are having a conversation with the state about having an increase in funding to be able to turn up the dial of frequency of those restructured routes to be able to say, this is something you can depend on as an alternate for having to take the freeway for tolling. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So that's, that call out should be on most of the slides there. Then another big play, thinking about a sources of essential and in-person work from Southwest. The Southwest region generally in Washington County, there's never been a direct route, seven days a week to get to OHSU without going into downtown Portland and backtracking. And that's such an important regional destination that we reconfigured two different routes through Hillsdale that would each 30 minutes. And then in Hillsdale, they would combine to be then frequent 15-minute service up to Markham Hill. So coming from Washington County in the Southwest to a high center of learning and essential and in-person work, we think that's really powerful. So here's kind of one snapshot in how that network improves for Tigard and Beaverton. You see the improvement along Murray through Progress Ridge there. And you see that new focus of improvement along Bonita and Cruzway. Those employment centers where a lot of employers frankly, from downtown Portland, every located. But you do see some impact through Kerr Parkway in Mountain Park to PCC from Lake as we go. This shows up as a small decrease in service due to Tigard has told us specifically that they would like the frequent service that they see on Hall to be moved into the Tiger Triangle. But I think there's more conversations to be had there around that. So, but that's where that small decrease is coming up. But Dave Roth at Tiger does been a great partner to work on with on this project. So that's, that's the Washington County in a snapshot. I'm going to blow past the rest. It's in your packet, but simply whoops, I went too fast, too far. Get that back up again. Sorry about that. If you could just, if you're able to find the next step slide. I'll just say it verbally here while we have the time. But so it's out for public comment now. There's a survey, open houses, shoe park library on, I don't, it's off the top of my head. It's, it's coming up next week, I believe. Or here on the west side. That, that, oh, that public outreach process goes through the end of the month. We hope to then also at the same time, working through partners and others refine this a bit and have a refined vision for the end of the year and, and start implementing with our next annual service change process, which would kick off next. Well, the spring would we, when we would take it back out to the public, talking about what we would actually implement the pieces of it, starting next fall. We think it will take us about three to six years to implement this, depending upon how things shake out through this public outreach process. Mainly just gated by the labor shortage. We have the resources, we just need to hire the operators and we're doing everything we can to try to solve that puzzle. But so first changes as early as next fall, but incremental in, in nature as we're able to hire and grow back resources. So that's
I think you did amazing. Commissioners. This is a draft concept to start the conversation. I know I have a question, but what questions or thoughts do you have?
I guess a couple of comments. Last night I listened to the gubernatorial WEA event between Betsy Johnson and Tina Kotek. WEA event between Betsy Johnson and Tina Kotek. And both of them kind of said TriMet's not meeting the regional demand in the Tri-City, in the Tri-County area. So I thought that was interesting. I I jumped on light rail a couple of weeks ago to go to the convention center from the Sunset Transit Center. In the process endured a homeless person using profanity for about twenty minutes on the same car I was on, while the same time another homeless person asked for money. With that kind of exposure, how are you going to get more people back on public transit?
I'll just be forthright and say I don't work in public safety. I'm not best equipped to answer that. Our, our government affairs team could get someone from public safety to talk to you about that. But what I can say that's within my purview is just that I think by making our network, the most, the goal of this process really was to try to meet today's need and meet that demand that we're not meeting. And do the best we can to do that. And the more that, I mean, a shorthand version of this is we want that if somebody wants to plan on trip on TriMet, that they should go to online trip planner, punch in what they want to do and find that there is a trip that does what they need it to do. That is a goal of this process. The more that that happens, I think hopefully the more people come back. And frankly, the more people are using the service, there's a natural level of safety by having other people on board who are able to report incidences, there's a call button to the operator, please use it. And they can, they are in touch with police. So I think people on board are also public safety and so to the extent that I'm focused on ridership, that is what I can do in, in trying to get ridership back and get the safe system feeling safer. But I know our safety team has done quite a bit to try to bolster their numbers on the safety response team and I did, they'd be happy to come talk to you about those issues.
Well, I think that's, you know, I, I understand this is a concept and it looks like a good concept and yeah, visionary or whatever, but I think it's overly optimistic. Considering your, the, what we hear about public transit not being a safe venue to get from A to B. And so I was kind of hoping I would hear a little bit more about maybe the marketing program that you're going to have to implement to actually reach these because just adding some more lines here and there, reducing some lines here and there, those are efficiency issues. I mean, we all know you need ridership. I see the, the one out by Evergreen that goes down Evergreen comes down this way. I've often wondered, you know, you, you get three people on that thing whenever I, that's the way I come into work. And yeah, I never see more than two or three people on that big old bus. So the fact that you're eliminating that, those are efficiency things, I get that. What I'm not hearing is how the heck you're going to convince people to get back on the bus and light rail because of safety.
So, thank you to our TriMet rep for coming and speaking with us. And it would be useful if Commissioner Willie is able to have that conversation with the team that you were referring to. Thank you. Other commissioners?
I'll make a very broad comment, I've made it to every one of your general managers. Other than Sam, I haven't talked to him long enough, but I would, I would simply say this. TriMet is trying to be everything to everyone. And my, my, my thoughts, and I'm not being critical, you run your, your company the way you want to run it, but you can't fit into everybody's needs, it just doesn't work. And so much as Washington County came up with what we call an MSTIP program defined what our network was and said, that's what we fix. We don't fix all these side streets. Until you define who you are and say, I'm not going to run a bus down every line, and if, if locals want to do that, we can form bus companies too, H B two thousand seventeen, as you know, and, and do those, those other lines that are important. Maybe smaller bus, smaller frequency, but I, I commend you on your maps. I was looking at here on my phone and trying to look at areas I represent and I think you guys do a terrific job in terms of planning, I think you do a terrific job in terms of sincerity, heart, imagination. I would just simply say, just one person, you don't do such a good job defining what your business is. And if you would be more of a wholesaler, instead of a retailer on every line, I, I think we would try to bring you customers instead of you trying to figure out where the customers are. Because as you said, most businesses, I happen to have an office out in the Tiger Triangle, we're flooded with downtown businesses, everybody's moving out of Portland down, out of that area. And so is that going to last forever? No, they're going to move somewhere else, people leave. They lived in, when I was a kid, we were all in Portland and now everybody's out in suburbs. But I, I think you're going to always trying to be defining new things unless you say, what am I, who am I? They listen, but they haven't quite got there yet, so that's my comment.
Very valuable input, I, I appreciate that. I think there's, of course, I'm proud of it, but I think there is some degree of that thereby, especially measured by that investment in frequent service. If service is going to run, it just needs to run regularly, frequently, reliably, all days of the week. And by, and so I think there's, what you're saying, I think we are trying to do a bit by literally increasing by fifty percent. It's taken my sixteen years at TriMet to get, I think, two or three more frequent service lines from when I started. So adding seven would just be pretty remarkable. But thank you, your, your point is very well taken and understood.
Yes, I will jump in and add and say, thank you for your presentation. This is really a good presentation and look forward to learning more about this draft concept and how it gets flushed out. I'm particularly more interested in the community engagement or the engagement piece and, and plan for, from TriMet. Particularly for Washington County. I, I, you know, when it comes to engagement, it's not one size fits all. And I think of Washington County, we have our own unique way of involving and we have a lot of community-based organizations that build that trust within the community that I think it would be really good to center them. I'm also interested within this draft concept. The idea of, you know, for example, Beaverton faced service reduction. And is there an opportunity to also, as you think about how they empower people to get on the bus and use TriMed? As a side, we all benefit transit system that works for everyone, that's reliable, that's cost effective and of course, obviously safe as well. But how do we? I'm, I'm really just interested in knowing, how do you plan? For particularly this county? How do you plan to do that and how do you plan to engage the community? And also, you know, ideally, this probably might be aspirational. I come from a generation where I went to college, you know, Portland University, Portland State University, PSU downtown, and I benefited the free, you know, TriMed. The, what, what was it called? I think there was a term for a free rider.
Went to PSU.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I benefited that, so I think for, and I know that isn't a consideration for the West Side, but I think it's an opportunity if that was to be revived, that the free opportunity for within downtown Portland to create that space of free rider. Free bus ride. Yeah, Fairless Square, that's it. Yeah, the Fairless Square. I think potentially Washington County, this side could be considered as well for, if that was to revive. There's been some conversations, maybe there might be a Fairless Square somewhere in the future, but Washington County maybe can be perhaps be a pilot space, I don't know where that would be, but so I'm in support of free Fairless Squares. I haven't attended that and took advantage of that. But yeah, so keep us posted. Is, if we can help you in any way, we know our districts and we know the, the dynamics that exist within Washington County, so let us know how we can support you on that. I'm looking forward to more.
Well, I would just say, you know, absolutely, and if you, while this is out for the public, if, if you hear folks reaching out to you, your constituents and know that our door is open, Chris or Diame can connect you with me and we'd be happy to talk, so.
Commissioner Truett, anything?
No, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I do have yours by the west, don't worry.
Yeah, no worries.
I just have a, a basic question. I looked at, at all the slides on my computer monitor last night and took in the different maps. And I know that the bus network is the skeleton for our whole transit system. Our light rail system is good too, but bus is the workhorse in the system. On slides nine and ten, I have a question about the access to opportunity. And it's, it's this, I find that folks who rely upon the bus service, try to make sure they get to their bus on time. And that might include being a little bit early to their bus stop and then walking then to their final destination. So on the next slide, slide ten, I'm wondering if that, you know, forty-five minutes is a long time, if you think about just a one-way trip. So here, I'm wondering, does this take into account that that potential rider had to get to their bus stop and then take the bus and then walk to their final destination? Is that all encompassed into the forty-five minutes? Or is that little bit of extra time to get to the bus stop and reach the final destination? Is that part of the forty-five minutes?
The way this analysis work, it is part of it, I think it shows up here. I'll just go, I don't want to take too much time, I would, I would just highlight that so it, it, so our GIS team, the Geographic Information Systems Group at TriMet has taken pretty great pains to catalog most of the sidewalk network across our region. And then that is programmed into Open Street Map.
Yeah.
And then this software remix is able to read that, the path along the sidewalk network to a bus stop, to get where they're going. And then that last walk from where they got off the bus into the door of wherever it is they're going.
Got it.
And so in some cases, you know, like right here, you have white thing that's outside of it, yet it's surrounded. And that's probably a function of that sidewalk network.
Yeah.
Where sidewalk network in these places may be great, but right here it may not be that. I, I could be wrong on that, don't hold me, you know, to that geography there in North Hillsborough, Helviche area, but, but what I'm saying is, is if this were as a crow flies, you wouldn't have any of these white areas.
Yeah.
So by the fact that you have the white areas, it tells you that it is considering all of those factors.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's great. And use, looking at your website on the phone, as you mentioned, the the face-to-face in-person open house is next Thursday, October twentieth at the Shoe Park Library from five to seven. And there is a virtual Zoom meeting being held in Spanish. So I assume it would also have English interpretation for those of us who don't speak Spanish, but would like to be in the West Side Zoom.
Absolutely, and kind of to the comments from Commissioner from District One, that one's also, we did partner with several different community-based organizations, but the Spanish one is being facilitated by El Centro Cultural.
Yep. So that one is Saturday, October twenty-second from one-thirty to three.
Yes.
All very easy to find on your website. Thank you, good job. I love the good work. Thanks for coming to explain what's happening.
Of course, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Grant. So we're still in the rain realm of public transit. So we'll move over to the Public Transportation Improvement Plan priorities with Chris Steffabach and Diame Valentine. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Well, that will, I'm pleased this worked out on our schedules because the two are really interlinked in topic and in timing and all. So why don't you just move to the next step, the next slide, there we go. So, so I just want to, first of all, you know, that you remind you that you have a Washington County Transit Advisory Committee that's been working to develop our recommendations for our funding requests for the next biennium. And I particularly want to thank our committee and also thank Chair Harrington for doing such an excellent job facilitating those meetings. And as Commissioner Roger, I think you've pointed out, the level of interest and enthusiasm among that committee is really, you know, they really are committed. So I just want to thank them. We also, I believe, if there are any committees, I also want to thank Ride Connection, our public transit operator that we contract with. They're just the best partners and I think either Julie or John, Julie Wilk or John Whitman are on the attendees list. If you have any question for them, then we can pull them in to answer a question. But we're really here because we're at that point in the biennium where we need to present our transit priorities to TriMet for inclusion in the three-county public transportation improvement plan that will then move forward for funding. So I'm going to turn this over to Diame, who's going to walk you through the transit committee's recommendations and, and where are we on the next step? But I think you'll see in this presentation how, what Grant just presented. You know, we've got some more work to do because some of the areas we had shuttles, they may now want to put service in. And so we've, we've got some coordinating to do with them on this.
Great anyways. So, Diame Valentine is senior transportation planner at the county and good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. So the agenda today, we wanted to review the, the statewide transportation improvement fund program, kind of the, the recap of that process as well as share with you the transit advisory committee recommendations and seeking your approval to advance those. So that, questions for you to consider today and we'll revisit these at the end of the presentation, but do you support the transit committee's recommendations? Are there any revisions you would like to propose? And then do you support forwarding these priorities to, to TriMet for inclusion into that public transportation improvement plan? So a quick recap, recap in terms of the program itself, this was established through the House Bill twenty-seventeen funds. We've talked to you about this before, it's the employee payroll tax that helps fund public transportation statewide, it has some clear objectives in that legislation. And just to note that since that passage, there has been a consolidation of the, the special transportation fund, that it's STF funds that provide services for older adults and people with disabilities. And so we're not here to necessarily prioritize those, but that has been wrapped into kind of a, the overall statewide transportation improvement fund program. And reminder, as Chris noted, the transit advisory committee was convened by your board to provide you with recommendations on services outside TriMet service boundary as, as well as provide recommendations for the community shuttle services inside those first last mile community connector services inside TriMet's service boundary. And just a quick process overview. We establish and through the transit advisory committee, a transit development plan that identifies priorities for the statewide transportation improvement fund, which gets advanced to TriMet. TriMet goes through their process, advances those to ODOT and OTC ultimately endorses those that biennium funding and it then comes back to TriMet and Washington County to improve or to fund those services. And as Chris noted, we are contracted with Ride Connection, we really benefit from their partnership. They're the public transportation provider and they've been obviously in this realm for many years. We benefit from leveraging that, that program and, and building on their services and really benefit from their community partnerships and engagement as well. So in terms of how we go, went through the process of identifying priorities for this biennium, as we have previously, did some community engagement, we really benefited from leveraging the, the work of the did some community engagement, we really benefited from leveraging the work of the public engagement through the major streets transportation improvement program priorities for the next program, as well as engagement opportunities with Council Creek Trail. So really benefited from that with in-person events. We also did, held an online survey and had traditional outreach strategy with our social media and other partners pushing information out. As well as, as Grant noted, we benefited from a lot of the, the information and feedback that we received through Trimate's engagement efforts as well. So just on our engagement, we did receive over 280 survey responses. Not a big surprise, we've, we've heard this before, the same type of needs in terms of needing more frequent service, more direct service, improving access and coordination. And one thing that kind of was highlighted through this effort was interest in improving connections to recreational opportunities, the coast. And then we see other opportunities to kind of encourage those kind of cross-county services as well through feedback that we heard. So I'm going to walk through these. These are the, the program areas that the transit committee identified or recommended for funding for this biennium. West Link is a service that Ride Connection provides, provides services for banks and north plans through Forest Grove and Hillsborough. Building on the good work that, that Ride Connection has done and that we funded in the past, improving those services to add, we can service more frequent service, modify route. Ride Connection will really do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of identifying what those priorities are moving forward. But just understand that there is a need that's been identified that we can continue to support with this funding. Demand response, this is door-to-door service for the rural area. So continue to provide those services. The funding that we provide allows general access, general public access to this program. Ride Connection has historically provided this for older adults and people with disabilities. The funding that we provide allows more general access. We see an opportunity and what we heard from the transit committee is an opportunity to improve efficiencies in that program. So there's various opportunities to do that. There are service providers through adjacent counties, Tillamook, Yamhill, and Columbia County. We see a really great opportunity to leverage those services. And one thing that we really heard is better coordination, better marketing, better, you know, raising awareness about those opportunities that are currently serviced. Maybe we can coordinate additional stop improvements and/or subsidizing trips. We'll work for a shuttle. This is a item that was actually in the previous biennium, but due to the pandemic, there's challenges in getting that program launched. And so we wanted to continue carrying that program forward because there is that need there to provide kind of a reverse commute program for people trying to get to work sites in the rural area from the urban area. So this would provide that kind of shared ride opportunity. And then budget to support stop improvements. This is an area that was a focus. We've actually received discretionary grant. We're in the process of implementing stop improvements on the shuttle services currently. So just continuing to do that funding that we have currently isn't going to get all of the needs met. So we think there's still opportunity to continue to make those improvements, not only for customer comfort, but also just awareness of services. And then on that kind of awareness of service, making sure that that's feedback that we heard from the community is just the lack of awareness of the services that are available. And so continuing to market and brand and provide outreach materials. And then there's of course, planning and administrative oversight for the program. And so in all, this is, these numbers are definitely fudgy, reflecting their forecasts. So we have anticipated funding that ODOT has provided forecasts for the biennium. So that's the outside, the Trimate district revenue assumptions. And then because of some of the challenges in delivering some of the programs through, from the previous biennium, we anticipate that we'll have some of those funds carry forward. And then the chart on the right illustrates just the kind of categorical program areas in terms of a breakdown. So I'm going to jump now to what has been referred to as regional coordination funds. These are the funds that are actually through Trimate's stiff, the, their allocation of formula funds. They have set aside a portion to fund the shuttles inside their district. And to Grant's point, there's some real, real opportunities here for coordination and collaboration and addressing some of the the system needs and that this, these shuttles might be better suited to serve these areas. So the proposal in general, I can talk to it a little bit more is to maintain those existing services. I wanted to note here, Commissioner Rogers is on the HB 2017 Advisory Committee. So he will see, this is kind of a preview of this, but we that committee has indicated that an interest in increasing the funds for this program. And so this is where we see an opportunity to increase the services. And so in addition to maintaining the existing services, we've seen an opportunity to enhance and modify again, kind of figuring out where that, that need and demand is. And I'll kind of walk through how we've identified that in coordination with Trimate. So just, these are the, the three, three services that are currently existing out in Forest Grove and Cornelius. There's the Grove Link, North Hillsborough, serving the employment area. And then in Twallerton, there's two existing shuttles. There's a red and a blue line service. And then because of some grant funding, the Ride Connection will be launching a service called the Green Line, which extends and connects to a service that Smart is providing on I-205. So we went through an effort to identify and actually the, the previous transit development plan identifies areas that are currently not served by fixed route service and did an assessment, looking at equity and ridership as a, as a key lens to identify where there might be opportunities to improve those community connector services. Again, in kind of coordination with the current four together service proposal. We've looked at where there might be, maybe some overlap and, and we've seen that there are some potential overlaps. And so, you know, we can kind of work through how, how those coordinate from a timing standpoint. And then just looking at, you know, making sure that this service really fills some of those gaps, again, that equity and ridership wins. And then trying to identify, and this is where Ride Connections partnership is critical and identifying local champions and partnership opportunities, as well as leveraging other funds and then making sure that we don't duplicate service. That's a critical aspect.
Can we go back to slide 23 real quick? Would these be on-demand or circular?
I think that there's opportunity for both, kind of depending on the context and that, that's some of the work that we would do, you know, between now and whenever that service is launched in coordination with the Right Connection.
Thank you.
So it, what the recommendation is, is really advancing all of these opportunities and incorporating them into our transit development plan so that they're at least eligible to seek funding, whether it's through regional coordination or other discretionary opportunities. In the near term, for the next biennium, aligning a service proposal with Trimate's four-together service concept is going to be critical. And so working out some of those details, what we think are those opportunities based on the service proposal for near-term funding is King City has a writeabout that we think we can leverage additional funding to enhance that service, to provide connections to Bridgeport Village. That Bethany area that was noted as losing service, we think there's a real opportunity to fill in and address that, that demand up there in a more efficient delivery. And then South Beaverton is another area where we think, and we've heard a lot of interest in, in addressing some of the, the transit demand there. That could be kind of a near-term filling in the gap in terms of when service can be extended, as, as Grant noted, out to South Beaverton. So in all, the service proposal recommendation that you would be advancing to Trimate's HB 2017 Advisory Committee is outlined here, which is to maintain the existing services, accounting for obviously cost inflation, enhancing existing services, adding weekday service in Cornelius, addressing service modifications in Hillsborough and Twallerton, based on some of the need and demand there. And then the, the new service areas to be considered, as well as purchase of new vehicles to accommodate that new service.
I have a question. The enhanced existing services in Cornelius weekdays, is that because there's more? What's the reason behind it? Is there more ridership or demand?
Yeah, Ride Connection, thanks for the question, Ride Connection. Added service, just a weekend circulator, and they've seen kind of growing ridership there. And we've also heard from partners in, in the community that there is an interest in seeing additional service on the weekdays. So in total, this, this, the, the budget here is again, kind of a, almost a doubling or more than a doubling of what the, the current services that Ride Connection is providing for the upcoming biennium. So in total, it's now not as so small of a budget that we're, we're thinking about in terms of revenue for the transit program that Washington County is, is delivering. So it's over $7 million for the biennium. And, and then just to note that the transit committee endorsed pursuing some discretionary grants. Actual letters of interest were due yesterday. We submitted four, four ideas, including some piloting, some on-demand kind of suburban and rural micro-transit services. There's really not any examples of that in the state. So I think there's a lot of interest there. Continuing to build on the, the work that we've done with stop improvements. And then there's two others that I'm not.
EVs, electric vehicles.
Yeah, electric vehicle purchase as well as a rural service plan. Just to note, we have been really successful in prior rounds with discretionary grants. I think in total, we've been awarded over 1.2 million in, in funding through this program. So back to the policy questions. Happy to hear any thoughts, comments?
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, just so that I'm clear, you know, me, the slide 26, where you say the biennium budget total is 5.8 million. That's for the additional services, right?
That would be, yeah, total, total service proposal for the regional coordination funding through Trimate.
And that's where, so when you go to the next slide where it shows outside and regional in total 7.1, so does that imply that we're good to go on this? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're asking for Board to, to support advancing that proposal to Trimate's HB 2017 Advisory Committee. They're, they're the deciding body that actually allocates those funds. So I think we're, we're just looking for your head nod that you're in support of advancing that proposal.
Well, this is a good, good presentation. So thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Did, and I may have missed this. I apologize if I did. Did, did Rine Chair experience the same drops? I'm sure, I'm sure he did in COVID. And then how does, how does the measurement pre and post? Are we doing that much like Trimate and Grant talked about?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I think we kind of benefited from grants providing that context. So we, Ride Connection did see very similar kind of drops in ridership and, but has also seen a kind of a comparable rebound as well on some of the services, like the North Hillsborough service, where it really was kind of an essential, you know, providing essential or providing essential workers' direct connection that I think had less of a dip. But, and they were also somewhat constrained because of the, the requirements to reduce capacity on their shuttles because of some of the COVID regulations.
The other thing I wanted to just comment on, you talked about the, almost the recreational aspect of potentially some of these trips to the coast or whatever. And I just wanted to highlight the, the service that goes out to Multnomah Falls and how successful that has been. So just as a reference point.
Yeah. Commissioner's thumbs up for moving ahead? You got five thumbs.
Okay.
I, I want to correct. I made a mistake on this one. It's not October 17th. As Commissioner Rogers knows, it's October 21st is your meeting. I don't know why I got so deep up there. So that's the date that this will be coming to the committee. And they're going to, they're going to defer to our plans for the area that comes, that gets allocated to Washington County. They, and they, they've already indicated they're interested in, in continuing to support regional coordination funds. I think that the concept has really caught on as the need to fill these first last mile gaps. But we'll see on the 21st. I'm expecting approval.
I just want to add that the Washington County Public Transit Committee has had the benefit of some really great community representatives. We've had engaging conversation, staff from the county, Trimate, Ride Connect, Smart, really bring good information to us and coordinate different surveys. I'm reminded of the, the surveys that Rebecca's brought in from her work in, here in Washington County with veterans disabled, seniors as well. And the plans that get put together reflect that really good work. So thank you. It is, it's been a fun committee, I think, because of getting to learn, listen and shape. You do a really good job.
There's definitely a need for these, these services to fill these gaps. So that's good, good to work on.
Great. Keep up the good work. All right. My fingers are crossed that you'll be the happy recipients of more discretionary grants.
Yeah. Well, I can amend the budget. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other items to bring forward to today? Nope. Angie?
Chair Harrington and Board, I do want to provide just a quick staff recognition. Here at Washington County, we want to wish Michael Niemeyer great growth in his career as he has accepted a position with Forest Grove to continue growing his IT career. And I know he doesn't like to be talked about, but this is, Michael are also known as Nemo, because I have to struggle saying his first name because he has allowed us and asked for, to call by his nickname. But this is just one example of the many employees that the Board or our community may not see on, on a daily basis. But they are really what is keeping the work going. So huge kudos to Michael. And I'm really glad you're continuing your public service career. And you know, the door is always open for you at Washington County. So thank you.
I don't wish you well. I want you to stay.
We're thrilled for your career opportunity.
Yeah.
All right. And with that, we will adjourn today's work session. Thank you. All right. And with that, we will adjourn today's work session. Thank you.